Good morning all, it is nine o'clock and time to get underway with our workshop. Welcome to everyone that is here, we're glad to have you with us. If you would stand please for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our Kids at Hope pledge.
Hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, we will turn it over to you to lead us forward.
All right, good morning, board members. So good to see everybody after our hurricane days where we missed. With the hurricane, we had to cancel our board meeting, which we will have later this evening. I want to once again welcome, you know, today's our last day with Mr. Kelly. I cannot tell you how, and I'll say some remarks later this evening about Mr. Kelly, but once again, I appreciate Mr. Kelly's many, many years of public service and I'm very incredibly grateful to have served with you, Mr. Kelly, not only as a superintendent, but also as the deputy superintendent. I truly appreciate, you're a real role model for me and just the many years of public service. It's not easy doing public service, especially when you have a day job and running for election after election after election and winning all those elections. And I could never, I could never do what the board members do, you know, in those election cycles, so I truly appreciate you. But I want to jump in and the last line, and I say this often, "All children are capable of success, no exceptions." I truly believe that. Mr. or Dr. Summer is going to be sharing a presentation today that some of our initiatives truly level the playing field for many of our most disadvantaged children. And I'm really excited about some of the things that he's going to be sharing with you. And it's basically each nine weeks, I update the board or try to update the board on our progress with regards to the metrics that we monitor in all of our schools. And Dr. Summer is going to be giving you kind of an update on the first nine weeks, how we did and how we compared to the last couple of years. I will say there is a little bit of a change. In the past, we've gone back to 2015 and I say that because that was my first year here in the district, but that was my first year here as the deputy superintendent. So we're really going to be starting with the last two years because that's, you know, when I took on my new role and that's kind of what I'm measuring myself against myself and not necessarily of the success of the past. So, Dr. Summer, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board, Dr. Prince. As Dr. Prince said, I will be speaking to our strategic goals, specifically starting with goal number two, to continue improvement in reading and math across all grade levels. First, I'll be looking at PM1, both reading and math, with a comparison of this year to last year for our school district. So let me orientate you to the first slide. As you see on the left, you see your grade levels, three through 10. And what the first column next to the grade level is, is last year's level three and above on our baseline assessment called PM1. So as an example, last year in grade three, 21% of our students in third grade scored proficiency at the beginning of the year baseline assessment. Next column is this school year, 24, 25. You see 20% of our students. Fourth column is the plus minus. And coincidentally, the first example I showed you, which is grade three, you'll hear more about that later when we talk about our curriculum and interventions, was a minus one compared to last year, but go down to fourth grade, 23 to 30, plus 7%. That means that 7% more of our students scored proficient at the baseline assessment of PM1 this year when compared to last year. Fifth grade, 28 to 28, 6, 37 to 43, that's a 6% increase. Seventh, 31 to 37%, that's a 6% increase. Eighth, 30 to 33%, that's a 3% increase. Ninth, 33 to 39, that's a 6% increase. And then 10th. And as a reminder, this is the beginning of the year assessment that assesses students on the entire year's standards. On the far side of this slide, you see the state of Florida, both last year and this year. Last year being 23, 24, this year being 24, 25. And you see the plus and minus by the state. Where your eyes may go naturally is to the checkboxes that are blue and yellow. And what that shows us is St. Lucy County met or exceeded the state of Florida improvement in six of the eight categories, actually exceeded in five of the eight as represented by the blue checkmarks. Our growth from year to year at the baseline exceeded the state of Florida in reading in five of eight categories. Just a quick list, and I won't read these to you, but these schools and grade levels represent a 10% increase in proficiency on the baseline assessment from last year to this. So just as an example, CA Moore fifth grade is at least 10% higher than last school year when it comes to proficiency at the baseline assessment. These are elementary schools, you have the handout, you can refer to that. Here's our secondary level schools that also had a 10% or more increase in that grade level from last year to this year. So as an example, Alapata Flat seventh grade has a 10% or greater increase this school year versus last year at the baseline assessment of PM1. So as a reminder, PM1 was assessed in August. We will take PM2 in December, some students in January. More PM1 data, looking at mathematics. Again, this slide compares this school year to last. And you'll notice the numbers are slightly lower, that's normal, because students typically make a significant amount of growth from PM1 to PM2 to PM3. But our baseline shows us we're relatively flat, we're up slightly. So as an example, at the bottom, I'll point out eighth grade, last year we were at 14%. This year we're at 17, which represents a 3% increase. On the far right, you see the state's performance, relatively flat as well. Quickly, I show the schools that have a 10% or greater increase in mathematics last year versus this school year. Putting it together in a scorecard, comparing last year to this year, when you break out each grade level in both ELA, which is essentially reading, English Language Arts, and math, you see that at the top. So we create our cumulative scorecard and you see St. Lucy Public Schools at the top. When you add up reading and math, the pluses and the minuses from last year to this year were a plus 32. When you compare that to the state of Florida, from last year to this year, the state of Florida is a plus 24. So we have shrunk that gap by eight points from the cumulative comparison. Now we transition. We're still in goal to continue improvement in reading and math across all grade levels, but as Dr. Prince mentioned, this will look at when Dr. Prince started as superintendent. Coincidentally, it's when the district, when the state of Florida, excuse me, changed the standards from the FSA to the FAST, which is why we look at the three-year trend. That's when the FAST began. So I'll orientate you to the next slide, which shows the three-year trend for ELA or reading. So at the top, as an example, in 22, 23 for third grade, St. Lucy County scored a 19 on PM1. Again, we're still looking at PM1 data. In 24, 25, 20% of our students at the beginning of the year tested on the entire year standards already showed proficiency. We've gone up one percentage point from 22, 23 when compared to ourself. Grade four has increased from 22% to 30%, plus eight. Grade five from 23 to 28, plus five. Our grade six students, their baseline score is up nine points from 34 to 43. Our grade seven students are up four points from 34 to 37. When you round it, turns up to four points. In eighth grade, 29 to 33 is up four points. Ninth grade from 30 to 39, we're up nine points from the 22, 23 school year. And then 10th, from 32 to 35. We compare it to the state and the blue checkmarks represent where we have exceeded the state growth when comparing 22, 23 to this school year of 24, 25. Mathematics, three-year trend. We compare the 22, 23 year to our current year of 24, 25. And you see that we exceed or meet the state in five of the six grade levels. When looking at the three-year trend for mathematics, comparing St. Lucy County to the state of Florida, grades three through eight. Give you a second to look at that. So as we mentioned, the PM1 assesses students at the full year, full year, excuse me, the full year of standards in the beginning of the year. So in 23, 24, we climbed from 28% to 48% on PM3 by the end of the year. This year, we're starting out at 33%. So last year, we started at 28, this year we're starting out at 33. But throughout the course of the year, from PM1 to PM3, students made significant growth from 28 to 48. In math, in 23, 24, we started out at about 10 and a half percent and we increased to 50%. So when you, when you see those numbers, you can see that math really grows throughout the course of the year. This year, we're already at nearly, we're close to 11% at 10.8. Let's look at it visually. Again, we're still looking at a three-year trend and we're comparing how the gaps have changed. And this looks at each grade level comparing 22 to 20, 23 to 24, 25, our three-year trend in reading. We put it in bold and in green because we've shrunk the gap by 5% when compared to the state over the last two years. And each of the up arrows shows where we had growth better than the state of Florida once the FAST was implemented. So as an example, in fourth grade, we've exceeded the growth when compared to the state of Florida by eight points, in fifth grade by five points, in sixth by ninth, and so on. You see third grade, the gap has increased by a percentage point, you hear more about that later today, and the steps that we're taking to address that. Moving to math, again visually representing the data and comparing us to the state of Florida, overall, we've shrunk the gap between St. Lucy County and the state of Florida on PM1 over the last three-year trend by two percentage points when it comes to the number of students at proficiency. And here we break it down by grade level. So as an example, third grade, we're even with the state of Florida when it comes to the three-year trend. Fourth grade, we outperformed our growth, increased by one percentage point more than the state of Florida, and so on. You can refer to the slides. Putting it all together, you see visually what our reading and math, on the left is our ELA or reading, and then on our right, by grade level is math. So third grade, reading and math is the first row, then fourth grade, reading and math, so you can see it together visually. So as an example, in fourth grade, we shrunk the gap by 8% in reading and 1% in math. Putting it all together in a scorecard, where we look at our cumulative performance of our three-year trend, St. Lucy County, both ELA and math is at the top. You see by grade level, the pluses and minuses for the three-year trend. Cumulatively, that adds up to a plus 56 from 22, 23 to this current year of 24, 25. When we compare that to the state of Florida, the cumulative trend is a plus 38. We've exceeded the state of Florida by 18 percentage points in the cumulative comparison. Again, you're looking at three-year trend comparing reading and math. St. Lucy County at the top is a plus 56, Florida's at the bottom as a plus 38. So there's been growth by both the state of Florida and St. Lucy County, however, our growth has exceeded that when compared to the state.
Dr. Summer, if I can interject, after I told you yesterday, I'm going to try not So the reason I'm interjecting now is we're going to kind of pivoting to attendance data. But what this, what this tells us is the rate of learning that our students, that's happening in St. Lucy Public School is, we're significantly closing the gap between our proficiency and the state. St. Lucy County, since they've had test scores, has significantly been behind the state average. So the last couple of years, we've closed that significantly. I also want to add, last year, our results were the best that historically we've ever had. We did a third better than the state when it came to proficiency. So it makes sense that we should start a third better, right? If you did a third better last year, you should, your starting point should be a third better this year. It's not really where you start though, it's how you finish. So, so that's where the secret sauce is. If we hold this performance at the end of the year, you know, we're looking at our first A rating. So it's, I mean, that's what the data tells us, is we held on to what we had at the end of the year. We had a really robust summer program. The students performed very well on PM1, but like I said, PM1 is not how schools and districts are graded. PM3 is how schools and districts are graded. We still have a blind spot in third grade reading proficiency and also in third grade math. And Liz Pruitt and Denise Rodriguez are going to be addressing how we're managing that and addressing that in K2. That's really where that challenge starts, is kindergarten first and second grades, and that their presentation would be about that. But I wanted to make sure before we went to attendance, that, you know, we had a really good start here, but it's really, to be quite frankly, it's really about how you finish. So I'm really proud of the students, I'm proud of the teachers, but we're only through with the first nine weeks. The other thing I'm going to add, and Dr. Summer is going to get into the attendance part here too, I do attribute a lot of our success last year, not all of it, but much of it, to the attendance initiative we had last year. And Dr. Summer is going to add that we had 900 more students attending daily. Well, the story is even better this year because that is a point of emphasis for us this year, is getting kids into school. And I didn't know if any board members had questions before we pivoted.
Yellow means that the growth tied that when compared to the state. Blue exceeded.
Okay, thank you.
And she's referring to the charts, where we compare ourselves to the state. And here's an example of a yellow checkmark. So in fourth grade, we improved by five, at five to five, which is we were flat zero, same with the state of Florida. So yellow means our growth tied that of the state. Blue means our growth exceeded that of the state. Seventh grade, we're up three points, same thing with the state. Okay? Good question, thank you for asking. If there's no other questions, I'll pivot to attendance for impacts on student learning. And we'll look at this in the same way because we looked at PM1 as a three-year comparison as well. Second, first, we looked at compared to last year. So we'll look at compared to last year first for attendance. And we do this by school type. So if I can orientate you to the next slide, this is a comparison of last school year, which was 23, 24, to this school year, which is 24, 25. Apples to apples, quarter one to quarter one. And you see by school type, and then the, essentially what the change is. As an example, elementary last school year was a 93% attendance rate. This year is at 94 for a plus one. K8 was 94, it's now 95 for a plus one. Middle school was 92, it's now 93 for a plus one. High school went from 91 to 92%, near 1%. Alternative, 73 to 77, which rounded up to 5%. Overall, gives us a 1% increase from last year to this year. When we quantify that with the size of our district, that gives us approximately 400 additional students per day compared to last year attending. And that gives us about 2,400 hours per day of instruction additional from last school year. And we want to highlight our schools that have a noticeable increase, performance-based, 8.3%. That's again, from last year, quarter one, to this year, quarter one. Fort Pierce Westwood, plus 3.4%. CA Moore, 2.9. Port St. Lucy High School, plus 1.9. St. Lucy West K8, plus 1.9. And Forest Grove, plus 1.84. We're very proud of those principals and teams for being able to accomplish this because as we transition to the next slide, we now look at the three-year trend from 22, 23 to 24, 25. And you see the same data points by school type, but I'll just point you to the bottom. Looking at just quarter one, it equates to approximately 1,000 additional students per day this school year versus two years ago, which gives us about 6,000 hours per day additional of instruction. And over that trend, Forest Grove Middle School has increased their attendance by 7.5%. That is remarkable. Dale Castons by 4.2%. Fort Pierce Westwood by 4.1%. And CA Moore by 3.5%. To Dr. Prince's point, a lot of our gains are going to come when our students are in school and ready to learn and excited to be there. So we're happy to share that data with you. And we will give you a quarter two update at the end of quarter two. There's no questions, I will pivot.
I do have a question, Madam Chair. What do you really contribute the increase of attendance to?
Sure.
What is being done to cause this increase?
It's a collective effort. We've got, we've had a lot of district support that was shared with you last school year, with our initiatives, our banners, our attendance teams and our attendance plans. But I got to give a shout out to the principals, the guidance counselors, the teachers and the admin teams on site because they are running their data points to identify those students that are not coming to school and they're contacting them and they're getting them in. And our social workers are going out and visiting homes to get our students out of the community into our classrooms. So it's a collective effort, but our principals are really after this. And I think also, from the soft side, the personal side, of the belief that if you're not here, I can't teach you. And they're making that clear to the kids, that if they're not there, we miss you, we need you to come in. And that speaks a lot and kids can feel that. You can't get a 7, 7.5% increase at a school unless those kids know that those adults want those kids in class and want them there every single day.
And the parents, this message is going forward to the parents as well, that you can't teach your child if they're not there.
Absolutely. It's all of us together, you know, it's the adage, it takes the village to raise a child. So it's really, it's everyone's collective effort together. But I do have to give a shout out, especially my role as chief of schools, the principals and their, and their teams have really led the charge, of course, with the collective effort of our district support and our social workers and our outside agencies too. Pivoting, we'll look at goal three, which is really increasing acceleration opportunities for all students. And we'll take a look at elementary AMP, middle school algebra and geometry, and high school ACE, AP, and IB enrollment. So we first look at AMP.
Craig, Dr. Summer, may I?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You know, I'm really, I'm really proud of this because, you know, my, I go back to my high school experience and, you know, you've all heard my story, I was one of seven kids and I completed my own course request sheet and I couldn't have given myself an easier schedule. I'm just being honest, I couldn't have given myself an easier schedule. Because for me, it was a path of least resistance because, you know, some of my siblings didn't graduate from high school. My goal was just to finish and go to work for my dad and that was my aspiration. Who's going to advocate for our kids? You know, my parents loved their children, but they worked. They worked all the time. And there was, there was nobody in the schools that was advocating for me. And I was fortunate enough to meet a teacher that did and, you know, changed my life, really. So our whole point to this is student advocacy. Because we know every child in our schools is loved by their parents. But in this day and age, a lot of times, our parents can't be as engaged as they want to be with their children. And we want to make sure that our children, opportunity should be colorblind and every child should have an opportunity. And this is one of the initiatives that I'm most proud of, that I have really, as a superintendent, it's been my philosophy, it's called equity and access, that we need to have equity in our programs and we have, we need to have access for all children for these programs in our schools. So, you know, sorry to interject again, Dr. Summer, my apologies. But Dr. Summer and our team have done an amazing job of actualizing this in our school centers, this philosophy. And it's, it is going to take off and take our district to the next level. And this is just the start. So, Dr. Summer, go ahead.
No, Dr. Prince, I appreciate it. It's really the mandate we see from you to ensure that we accelerate opportunities for all students, to ensure that we really build first-time college graduates. And looking at that, we'll take a look at AMP, middle school algebra and geometry, and then ACE, IP, and ACE, AP, and IB enrollment. But first, let's take a look at elementary school. So let me orientate you to this slide. You see a three-year trend. And looking at the number of students total in our district that were enrolled in what was called AMP, and I shared AMP with you, it's essentially accelerating their math enrollment in grades three through five. What this slide shows you, that we increased from 451 students in 2023 all the way to 1,244 students this school year, which is the 2025 school year, that is currently enrolled in AMP. And if you look at that as percentage-wise, that's an increase from 5% of all of our students in grades three through five, up to 13 and a half percent. Number of students is a plus 793. And that's overall. Let's drill into that a little bit on the next slide. We know that we've increased by 793 students, but who? So when we break this out by student subgroups, we see each race represented by a clustered bar chart. Taking a look at 2023 as an example, our black students, of the 451 students enrolled, see the number 80? That's how many black students were enrolled in AMP in 2022, 2023. If you move to 2024, 2025, this school year, that number's increased to 294 as represented by the dark blue column.
You mean the black?
So black is the dark blue. In 22, 23, you see it's the first bar, is 80, to 24, 25 is now 294 students, which represents a 260% increase or nearly quadrupled the enrollment for that subgroup. Next to the black students, if you go back to the bottom left, 22, 23, you see Hispanic, that's the second bar, you see the 118. That's how many Hispanic students were enrolled in AMP in 22, 23. If you go to the right, you see all the way to the right for 24, 25, the second bar, we have 389 Hispanic students, which represents a 230% increase, nearly tripled. I'm sorry, more than tripled, excuse me, from 118 to 389. And then you see other, and other would be any subgroup that's not black, white, or Hispanic, like our Native American, our Asian, or our mixed, and then our white students. Each subgroup has significantly increased, as denoted, 268% increase for our black students, 230% increase for our Hispanic, 208 for our other, that's again, Native American, Asian, mixed. And then our white students have more than doubled their enrollment, from 214 to 441. Any questions?
Madam Chair. So we know the students are not coming and saying, I want more accelerated, you know, math. So how are we getting this increase?
So, Dr. Prince, specifically when it comes to scheduling, we schedule students based on their potential. And we look at a number of data points to, this is, so this would be AMP. So what we do is we really target those students with the potential to be accelerated. And that's a process that our principal supervisors, our executive rectors do with each school site, with support from our teaching and learning department to identify the students that would most benefit from giving that, you know, by being given that opportunity. And it's a three-year process. And really, our entry point is identifying kids coming out of second grade, going into third, that really would have that. More importantly, I think, you know, as, you know, it's in our strategic plan, but our training from our teaching and learning department is very strong to ensure that as we put kids into these opportunities, that our teachers know and understand some of the pitfalls that have historically occurred, to make sure that we retain them. And as you see, that's occurring. So it's a mix between identifying students based on their potential and then really good training with our teachers to build their capacity.
I want to also add too, that we don't have a gatekeeper mentality, Dr. Mills. So if a child demonstrates potential on an assessment score, but let's say that child has, you know, some discipline history. So there are times that people would So there are times where people would try to create a barrier that would prevent that child from participating in AMP. Some kids act out because they're bored. They're just not being stimulated. And and we need to provide opportunities for kids. We've got plenty of kids that, um, that need a challenge, that need to be stimulated, and this is a great opportunity for them. Because what this does fundamentally is when these kids matriculate from fifth to sixth grade, all of a sudden, because of the AMP program, they're eligible to take high school credits in middle school. And when they get to high school, they'll be able to take college classes in high school. So we are, we're trying to create what I call an individualized learning environments where kids get accelerated at their pace, and we should be challenging our students.
And, you know, even, we were at Lawnwood yesterday, and even we have retained students that because of reading, again, we're, this is for mathematics. Some students are even retained for reading purposes. But it, you know, the question is, well, why, why hold them back in mathematics if they're strong? We even have some students that were retained in third grade that enrolled in AMP for mathematics. So to Dr. Prince's point, they don't get, they don't get bored, they don't fall behind, and we continue even growing those students. So it really, it's, it's, it's an all-encompassing effort, um, to answer your question. But it doesn't stop in elementary school, because in middle school, um, and this is an area we're, we're, we're going to look at closely, in middle school, it also, um, and 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 our Ks, in our grades six through eight, we want to examine for both our middle schools and our Ks. How many of our students in the last three years have we increased enrollment in high school-level coursework? That's represented by this slide. So I can orientate you to the slide. In twenty-two, twenty-three, the light blue was our algebra enrollment in our grade six through eight, and the darker blue was our geometry enrollment in our grade six through eight. And then when you go to the right and you compare the numbers for our algebra enrollment and our geometry enrollment, we had an increase of three hundred forty-eight students. And if we drill into that a little bit, we break that down by student subgroup, just like we did with AMP on the next slide. So what does it, who is the three hundred forty-eight students? And here we have it broken down by student subgroup. So of the three hundred fifty, you see that over the last two years from twenty-two, twenty-three, our three-year trend, we were able to realize a fifty-three percent increase with our black student enrollment, as you can see the first bar in twenty-two, twenty-three, three eleven. Going to the right to twenty-four, twenty-five, there are up to four hundred seventy-six students enrolled in either algebra or geometry in grades six through eight. Eight, plus eighteen percent for Hispanic, plus forty for our other, plus twelve for our whites. So each student subgroup significantly increased in our three-year trend in enrollment in middle school algebra and geometry, technically grades six through eight.
And I also wanted to add too, Dr. Summer, you know, we are a third, a third, a third district. You know, we are a third white, a third black, a third Hispanic. Black, white, Hispanic, we, we should have about the same number of students enrolled in these courses uh, that should be reflective of our clientele. And you can see over the last couple of years, that's where we're getting to. We're getting to that. We're not there yet, but we're getting there. And we were already one of the top districts in the state in middle school acceleration. So we're, you know, we're raising the bar even higher for our students, and we were already performing at a very high level.
Thank you for clarifying that because I'm looking at these bars, and even though I see an increase, I still see that we have a way to go to make sure that the, the gap is closed
Yep.
in those increases. So thank you for bringing that up.
But we've been significant in getting there.
What is the expectation? I'm assuming there's probably three thousand, four thousand students in, uh, third grade or whatever.
Yep.
Well, what's our, what's, what's our expectation in, in, you know? Yep.
For scheduling? Or just in terms of, like, where's the end result going?
Yeah.
For a number?
Yeah, basically, that's what I was trying to figure out is, so when do we, I don't want to say arrive because it is a process and it is a flowing process, but, you know, when, when will we, like, say, okay, well, this is, you know, we have three thousand students and we got a third of them, or we, what's our expectation? We're trying to get fifty percent?
Uh, Mr. Ingersoll, I don't think there is an expectation. I think it's, it's something we've, we've introduced. Uh, I always say, you know, no child ever rises to low expectations. And what we're trying to do is provide opportunity and access to all students who demonstrate that ability. And I think that, you know, from a cultural standpoint, we're trying to, uh, you know, there's a whole lot of careers that, that kids can go into. Uh, not every kid's going to go to college, uh, but just like me, uh, if I was shown a door, I could step into it and and look at me now. And, you know, I've got siblings that don't have or were not afforded the opportunities that I have, and their income reflects that. These are kids, a lot of them, uh, come from, uh, uh, some single-family homes, uh, high poverty, but they are going to have opportunities to increase their earning potential substantially based on the doors that we open for them as early as elementary school. So the answer to your question is there's not a target percentage. It's just trying to provide opportunities anywhere and everywhere we see them. And having high expectations for our students, and that goes system-wide from elementary to middle to high school. Dr. Wild?
Yes, thank you. That's an excellent question, and I just wanted to elaborate a little bit. You can see, um, to, um, Dr. Mills's point, the elementary gap is still larger than the middle school gap. We've been working on middle school for longer, and you can see that the gap is very narrow now in algebra and geometry in middle school. Elementary is a newer initiative, and you might have heard Dr. Summer say it's a three-year process. The reason for that is you can't go straight into this pathway if you haven't had the foundation laid for you. So trying to target those students in second grade so they get the full foundation. Our target group would be students who show proficiency at least two years in a row before we would put them in the program. So we, we provide all their, the intensive services to get them proficient and and then try to get them on that pathway as soon as possible. And that strategic scheduling is when you put them in, making sure they're going to be exposed to the right curriculum. So that's why it's such a child-by-child effort at the school level with the support of teaching and learning and the EDs on the scheduling process, um, because it's all of those things together. So our target would be different by grade level based on the proficiency rate in each grade level. So just wanted to elaborate a little.
No, I'm, I'm well aware of AMP. I've known AMP for five years now. But, uh, my question predominantly should have been is, when a kid takes, uh, the FSA and gets a level three, and that's their, basically the criteria to five, have we looked at the percentage of kids that did that, and are they in AMP? Because that would be your target group, that's your expectation. That's basically the number that I was looking for, that we won't have today, but I was wondering what that number is
Right.
compared to the comparison.
Which is exactly the criteria that we use for the middle school. And so we're just, the elementary will mirror that, we're just earlier in that implementation, but you're exactly correct.
But, but yeah, that's what I'm saying is, so I, I was one, I mean, obviously, Dr. Dr. Prince, you're correct, but the criteria is the criteria, and you know the criteria going from third grade to fourth grade. I was just, was wondering that, the students in that criteria group as opposed to the students that are getting into it. You could look at that by finding how much the percentage of what's on the F count. I mean, you can just go to DOE and look at it.
Understood. And, you know, what's so important, I think, both Dr. Wild and Dr. Prince mentioned, is the opportunity aspect is the success rates of, of students on these assessments as they're accelerated. Sometimes it's counterintuitive. The, the layperson would think, you're accelerating students years ahead. Are you setting them up for failure? Which is why you really want to be strategic with it. In middle school, your algebra across the state, pass rates exceed eighty percent when students take algebra or geometry in grades six to eight, and it drops significantly, um, to near, near twenty, twenty, thirty percent in ninth grade, which is why it's so important that if you had a child, which pass rate would you prefer? You'd prefer the eighty percent pass rate. That's actually the accelerated route, which is why we want to make sure, to your point, we accelerate all students as early as possible. Same thing with our, with our AMP. You would think, wow, you have, you have students accelerated in elementary school, they're taking a fifth-grade test in fourth grade. Are you setting them up for failure? Well, even with our significant increases from two years ago to last year, we maintain about a hundred percent pass rate. Um, so overall, it helps the kids that are enrolled in it because as they're accelerated, their learning also accelerates. Same here for middle school, and if I can pivot, I'll pivot to, um, our ACE, AP, and IB enrollments. And you see three different enrollments here. Uh, now we're transitioning to high school. So we looked at how we're increasing our enrollments at the elementary level, grades three through five. We just looked at grades six through eight for algebra and geometry. How have we done in our three-year trend when it comes to the number of courses? So right now, we're looking at the total courses offered. So if one student took five classes, they're counted five times in this chart here. So it's just, it dup, it's called duplicated. So it's six thousand courses we've increased, because on the left, you see twenty-two, twenty-three. The light blue at the bottom, that's the number of ACE courses we offered in twenty-two, twenty-three, was four thousand one hundred ninety-seven. And if you track that over to the right, that's more than doubled to eleven thousand ninety-six. The light blue is the ACE or the Cambridge ACE that we should, we've shared with you. Above that is the middle blue, that's our College Board AP enrollment. In twenty-two, twenty-three, the total number of courses offered at the high school level was one thousand two hundred sixty-seven two years ago. This past year was six eighteen, slight decrease. You see that Cambridge ACE has really increased, and then IB as well. When you put them all together, we've more than doubled our enrollment in terms of course enrollments from five thousand nine hundred thirty-five to twelve thousand one hundred sixty-one. And digging into, who is that access going to? You see a similar trend that we've seen when it comes to AMP, when it comes to geometry and algebra in six through eight, and now high school. So as an example, the same format, this is total courses enrolled. Our blacks students have more than doubled, one hundred forty-two percent increase, Hispanic has more than doubled at a hundred and four percent. Our other group is at seventy, and our white is at eighty-six percent in the overall course enrollments in our three-year trend in high school. Give you a second to look at that slide. And I have two more after this one.
Madam Chair, can I just ask if you would let the general public know what AICE is?
Sure.
and AP and IB, like I always do. General public has no idea what we're talking about.
Cambridge ACE. So ACE is our, um, is our, our Cambridge certification exams that is college-level coursework. AP is advanced placement from College Board, and IB is international baccalaureate. Three different college-level programs that students can, can pursue while they're in high school. They take the courses, they earn weighted credit while they're in the courses, and when they pass the exams, they earn college credit. This is just looking at course enrollment, so it's actually looking at opportunities for that. And our success rates are above fifty percent across the board, so as you give students that access, the, the, the success rates, um, mirror those.
And Dr. Summer, can you go back one slide real quick? And and I know there's numerous pathways to full Bright Futures, but we have seen a significant increase in our ACE enrollment. And, Dr. Summer, can you just talk a little bit about Bright Futures and why ACE can be sometimes advantageous with regards to getting full Bright Futures?
Sure, I can speak as a parent, both as a, as an educator. We know college is very expensive, obviously, so we want to provide as many opportunities to a full scholarship as possible, so a full Bright Futures scholarship is, it'll pay for the tuition for your child. There's a couple of ways to get it. One way is very difficult, where you have to earn a very high SAT score and do really well in school. Another way is to, is to earn a diploma from either the IB program or the ACE program. And historically, the ACE program, it's called an ACE diploma, is the quickest pathway and the easiest pathway just by the sheer numbers, as a way to get a full Bright Futures scholarship to get your tuition paid. However, it's a scheduling challenge. You have to provide a student with the opportunity to earn enough past exams. It's actually seven over a three-year period. That's the, that's the traditional way to earn an, an ACE diploma. So in my freshman, sophomore, and junior year as a child, if I take the, the, if I'm given access to the right coursework and I pass the exams at the end of the year, that total seven exams in some categories, and I'm simplifying, I'll know right then and there, once I get my, my scores in, that I'll be able to qualify for a full Bright Futures. Which is why the ACE has been such a, a, a demand by principals and students and parents because of those pathways. And worst-case scenario, if I don't earn the, the ACE diploma and I, I get to take some ACE courses, I get some college credit paid for when I pass the tests, and I also get a better, um, weighted point average, grade point average. And the pass rates on many of the exams are at seventy percent, so that's why you see the significant increases. We're not an outlier, um, in terms of, um, the fact that it's growing. Uh, our growth is an outlier, but in terms of the growing in the state of Florida, ACE has really exploded, for lack of a better term, because of that and the benefits it gives to children. I hope I encapsulated that.
Dr. Summer, do you contribute then from what you've just said? Because I see the IB and AP numbers
Stagnant.
are dropping, especially, um, our AP numbers. You say you attribute it to the availability of ACE and, uh...
So if you remember the seven exams that students have to pass, a lot of times, the AP and the ACE can compete with one another. So when students have an option of taking an exam in AP versus ACE, they'll pick the ACE because it can qualify them for the Bright Futures, which is what's tip, which is what has been occurring in the state of Florida. That's a, that's a common trend.
And that's something that we've definitely acknowledged in our high schools. You know, my, you know, I go back to my own personal experience with my son at Treasure Coast. Passed eight ACE exams, got full Bright Futures with offerings. We had Treasure Coast, we expanded the offerings at St. Lucie West Centennial, not because Meredith Prince was going there and Westwood, but because, but because, uh, it, you know, we just had a demand for it, and we want to make sure that that demand is, uh, is equitable in all of our schools, that all of our students should be able to take an oppor, take that opportunity uh, to be afforded to them, especially, that's, that's a game changer when you can have your college completely paid for, for our families. So we're trying to make sure that those options are available in all of our schools.
So they are, uh, available in all high schools at now. When were they not? Just so that I can have kind of a comparison here. What was the change in?
Yes, uh, it, it was a progression. Originally, it was started at Treasure Coast High School. Then it expanded to, uh, Centennial High School and Westwood as part of their magnet school conversion. And the other schools were focusing on different programs like AP and IB. And then in the last couple of years, we started it at, it, it's a progression because you have to start sort of with the ninth-grade classes and work up. So then we started it at Port St. Lucie High, um, Fort Pierce Central, and actually also Lincoln Park Academy, who has the strongest, um, international baccalaureate program. Um, we did start the Cambridge ACE program there as well. Um, and that's a smaller population, so they will pick and choose which one they're going to do. But now they all have that available to them.
And when were, was it available to Westwood?
Uh, when the magnet school grant started, so about seven years ago, six years ago.
Good news.
Yes.
Yes, good news.
I'll pivot to, now, just looking at students, and we're still talking about high school um, coursework pursuing ACE, AP, and IB. So the college-level courses, just looking at students, not courses. So we look at individual kids by subgroup. Um, I'll orientate you to this slide. I went forward a couple. So what it, what equates to the three-year trend is we have an additional two thousand three hundred fifty-six students in grades nine through twelve. That's a sixty-six percent increase from twenty-two, twenty-three. And here, um, we break it down by program. So the number of students, so this doesn't consider a student multiple times. This is only considering each student one time. The previous was, each student was counted multiple times if there were multiple courses. So as an example, our AP, the number of students enrolled in our AP, IB, ACE. And this, and this, this slide, by the way, is also considering, I apologize, this is overall acceleration, excuse me. This is both AMP and elementary, this is putting all of it together. This is putting AMP in elementary, this is putting middle school and algebra together with AP, IB, and ACE. So this is all of our acceleration into one, in our three-year trend. I apologize for that. And that shows that we've had a sixty-six percent increase, or two thousand three hundred fifty-six more accelerated students in grades K through twelve. The dark color at the bottom is our high school-level work from seventeen fifty-seven to twenty-nine seventy-two. Those are individual students. The middle is our al, uh, algebra and geometry, and then the top is our AMP. And you'll see those, the same numbers in the previous slides, it's put everything together. Final slide then, looks at this a different way. It looks at our student subgroups. So of our sixty-six percent, which students are increasing their access and how many? So each, this is a stacked bar graph, so each student group is in each school year. So as an example, if I can orientate you to the final slide, it says acceleration course enrollment by subgroup. And we see that we've had a sixty-six percent district-wide increase in acceleration over the past three years. We see that we had an additional eight hundred forty-eight black We see that we had an additional 848 black students that are enrolled in either an AMP, elementary, in either middle school, algebra, geometry, or some type of college-level coursework in high school. 784 additional Hispanic students, 203 other, 540 white students. Graphically, we represent that on the right-hand side, you see each different student subgroup is a different color. So, if you look at the first stacked bar graph, you see the bottom dark color of 859, that's our black student subgroup. If you tra- track them to the right, at the bottom, 24, 25, we have 1,770, 1,707 black students. That's that 848 student increase. Okay, and then, each student group is depicted. I'll give you a second to process that and see if you have any additional questions.
I just noticed that for this year, the, the gaps in this area look like it's closed, basically, with the subgroups.
Yeah, so this, this is individual number of students. But as you said, we still have some work to do. But this gives you a good visual representation of how we have moved from 2022, 23 to 24, 25.
You know what, I'm, I'm gonna be, quite frankly, Dr. Mills, that was, that's, that's a great observation because I didn't even notice that, that, that summarizes it for 24, 25. You are absolutely right because this summarizes the number of students that are participating in our accelerated program in elementary, middle, and high. And there literally is, uh, is, is no gap. So, that's a, that's a great, that's a great notice there. Just wanted to thank my team. You know, we talk about our culture and our expectations and what we want to see in our schools all the time. But to operationalize this, the amount of work that it takes, not just in our school centers, but also from our district leadership team. They do a fantastic job of working with our, our school principals, with our executive directors, and the seamless work that we do with teaching and learning. It's a true collaborative effort. Everybody's rowing in the same direction. I, I can't, uh, some, you know, I'm, I'm half-making a joke, but sometimes I have to pinch myself that, that I've managed to, to have these people to work with because they're just absolutely amazing people. They're not just amazing talents. They're committed to public education, they're really committed to, you know, all children are capable of success, no exceptions. That's just, it's not just a phrase. We're, we're, um, we're operationalizing that in our school district, and, and we're providing opportunities for all students. And it's not just certain subgroups of students. If you look at our numbers, all students that have that, the capability are being challenged. And if, before we pivot to Dr. Wild's portion of the show and teaching and learning, I'll, we'll take any questions from our board members or comments.
I'm just so grateful to see what's being done at this point in time. Because, you know, you have, as it's already been brought out, children, most of them, will take the easiest path. And throughout the presentation, I'm thinking about this one kid at our after-school program, who is in the fifth grade, and every day, his teacher gives him, he has to read for 10 minutes, and then, he has to give a recap of what he's read. And I noticed this kid has been picking up kindergarten books to do his little reading, and, and he's a fifth grader.
Yeah.
So, we had to just cut that right quick.
Sounds, sounds like me.
But that's, that's what kids will do. I mean, he, you know, several days, he goes and gets one of our books in our library and sits there, and he's a fifth grader. And he's reading Kenny, the easiest books he could read, you know? One time, he picked up, um, Go Dog Go. I'm like, what are you doing here? But that's how kids think, many of them, the easiest path. So, we had to get that straightened out. But just to see that we, as a district, is really taking the, the go with the kids and, and making sure that they accelerate, and he's very smart. This kid has got no reading problems at all. So, thank you for what you work, and thank you for being able to see the importance of every child and not putting it in the child's hand whether or not they want to succeed or not.
To your point, Dr. Mills, we don't just dump kids into these accelerated classes and just expect them to perform. There is a lot of support that goes on with these children to try to make sure that they're successful. And one little bit that wasn't, that was kind of passed over is last year, with our AMP participants in grades three, four, and five, we had almost 100% proficiency. And that's curriculum a year ahead of, of their grade. So, it is working, and those kids are being successful. And we're seeing that not just in elementary school, but middle and high. But there's a lot of supports put in place to try to make sure that we're supporting the kids along the way. Because a lot of these kids, to your point, they are, they will take the path of least resistance. And the first nine weeks, sometimes, are about building their confidence that, that they can do it, that they, they belong. They belong here, so, thank you.
Like to say, um, kudos, I guess, to the teachers because they are the ones that have to identify. I mean, we have the data, so we look at the data, but you know, the data can't say anything. You know, they have the potential, but are they ready? You know, and we make them ready. The teachers are the ones that are there that's encouraging them, that is, you know, just right there, you know, empowering them. So, I just really want to say thank you to our teachers for being there for the kids.
I don't see any, Mr. Kelly?
Just one quick one, I, picking up on what Dr. Mills was saying. In order to get more kids enrolled in these accelerated courses, what, and I shouldn't really ask what incentives, but are we gonna offer any incentives or explain to them why this, it helps them out later on? Or is, do we bring in motivational speakers to, how do you get them to? And I don't have the answer, I'm asking. Or are, are we working on ways to do that? Because it's not gonna get them in if we don't, they don't have a reason to join, you know? And I don't mean giving them a big bag of M&amp;M's, I mean, there's gotta be something to get them in, you know?
Well, the first part of that answer, Mr. Kelly, is that we're not waiting for them to ask for the courses. We're scheduling them in the courses. So, they're not selecting them themselves, as Dr. Mills was mentioning. We are seeing their potential, providing the support through the teachers with the district support, and then, scheduling them in the courses. The part where the motivational piece comes in is, once they're in there, showing them that they can be successful. And you do that every day. You show them by teaching them the content, giving them an assessment, mini-assessments in chunks that they're successful on. And then, you point it out to them, look, you can do this, you're being successful. And if you're struggling, we're gonna provide you that support to make sure you're successful. So, it, as it was said, it takes a village, it takes everyone involved. We do take the time to provide additional training on this acceleration path for our teachers. When we started it as pilot groups and in certain populations, we did so much training with the teachers so they could explain it to the parents and to the students. And now, we've expanded that to all teachers so that the parents understand. You said, so they know what they're gonna get out of this, what's the value? We're teaching that as we go along, as they're in the, if we're offering them tutoring, here's the why it's important that you hang in there, give it your all when we support you. So, it's not about the front end of getting them in the course, it's about keeping them in the course and making sure they're successful.
Also, Mr. Kelly, you know, we work with our counselors as well to try to have kids and students visualize. You know, we have Zello, where students have career pathways, and it's trying to get them to imagine, you know, don't put a ceiling on what you can be and what you can do. There are other things out there in the world that you have the potential to do, and what are those things? What do they look like? I know this, we're bringing forward this strategic plan this evening, but we're gonna be rolling out something in January that is looking at career pathways as early as elementary school, middle school, adding middle school components to that in high school so that kids are being exposed to opportunity and different things at an earlier and earlier an age instead of starting at high school. So, to your point, we're trying to create a, a, a K through 12, um, philosophy where kids are being exposed, let's, let's start your dreams a little early, and what do you want to be when you grow up other than a YouTuber or a race car driver? I'm just saying, you know, I mean, kids can dream about those things, but we want to provide them with some practical things that they can be exposed to at a younger and younger age, and don't put a ceiling on your potential. You know, there's opportunities out there that maybe you haven't even recognized or visualized yet.
And may I just add to your question, Mr. Kelly? As they get older, and we need to start teaching this at a younger age, they also benefit because their transcript becomes more competitive for their, whatever their next step in life is, they're gonna get a weighted GPA from those courses. So, when we start them in middle school, Dr. Prince says it all the time, it gives them the opportunity to take college-level courses in high school. We're, we're beginning to tie those initiatives together so we can say that explicitly to the students with additional benefits. The Bright Futures, the being more competitive, being ready for wherever life takes you after high school.
I understand that, and I'll leave you with this. And, uh, most of the things that I, that I say to you folks are, you already know it. And, uh, I'm just here to remind you, you know, 100 years ago in another life, before we started school, before I started freshman year or junior year or whatever, we had a parent-teacher night. And you'd go in before school, maybe two weeks before, and you'd go in and, uh, with your mom and dad and sit down with the teacher, and all this would get explained to you, and why the teachers would tell you, you know? And, and whether you wanted to take Latin the next year or not, a lot of times, your parents decided for you. We don't do that anymore. I mean, basically, we don't, we, I think, what I've learned is that we don't have the parent participation that we had years ago. Do we, Mrs. Holly? We don't. And, and, and it's a shame, and I think that's one of the biggest problems we have. I'll leave you with that, just here to remind you. We could get the parents, and I think that would help a lot, but not gonna happen.
All right, we're gonna do the Dr. Wild pivot into what we're doing in reading and math. One of our priorities is to increase student proficiency across the board. But also, one of our priorities has been to really focus on our third-grade students' performance. And one, some of the, so what we've seen really is, is the, um, that initial reading acquisition in kindergarten in first and second grade, and the only way we can improve performance in third grade is to really reflect on what we're doing in K2. So, this presentation is going to, I'm just gonna turn it over to Dr. Wild, and I'm gonna stop talking.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Prince. I am happy to be here, and, Mr. Kelly, please watch. In January, we're gonna talk more about what you just brought up with the parent involvement in the conferences, I promise.
Get those parents in.
It's in our plan. Okay, this is actually the extension of what we started at the last board meeting. And you will recall that we had a great presentation that Heather Belitho shared, and she began talking about what we're doing in English Language Arts Reading. And she first talked about teaching our teachers and our students how the assessments work. And that's the computer adaptive tests and how, when a student takes, reads a passage and answers the question, depending on how they do on that question or that passage, they get different questions. So, they're not all getting the same questions. And there's a strategy there that students and teachers need to be aware of. So, she went over that with us, and then, she began talking about the science of reading. And that is literally about how students learn to read, from word recognition to reading comprehension. And she talked about how we are developing our teachers to be able to use the latest research on reading acquisition. We also began to share with you what we're doing in the primary grades for phonics instruction with our new U-Fly program. We're going to pick up the presentation there where she left off, and you can see you have copies of the slides. So, I believe we're starting on slide 19. Ms. Belitho is out of town this week, so her supervisor, Mrs. Rodriguez, is going to take over for her as the Executive Director of Teaching, Learning, and Leading, followed by Dr. Liz Pruitt, who is going to share the same type of information around our math initiative and our math support for teachers, and how that assessment works slightly differently, and how we are training everybody to ensure that we're putting the right strategies in place for all of our students. So, I'm gonna turn it over now to Mrs. Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good morning. Today, we are going to be, again, focusing in on our continuing improvements with our reading and math across all grade levels, as that is, again, one of Dr. Prince's goals. As Dr. Wild mentioned, we're going to be jumping into the reading section of this presentation. And we're going to continue to discuss our U-Fly initiative, which is our core phonics program. We're going to extend that into how we are really operationalizing that in our literacy routines, and then, talk more about a focus on vocabulary across all content areas and in all grade levels. And again, how we support our leaders and provide ongoing professional learning. Dr. Pruitt will be able to really expand on that test design and really dig into the importance of having our students have a conceptual understanding of math and being able to support our teachers in really having that pedagogical understanding of mathematics, and again, leadership development and additional professional learning. Unfortunately, Mrs. Belitho is not able to join us today, so I'm going to continue the presentation where we left off last time. So, in your package, you have all of the slides that we did review last time, and we're going to jump right into slide 19. So, we want to be able to share with you that video of being able to showcase our three pilot schools last year, Lakewood Park at Weatherby, and, um, being able to have you hear from our leaders and from the teachers. Savannah Ridge, I'm sorry, was our third school. You'll hear from the coaches and the teachers about how they adopted this program halfway through the school year. And very quickly, they saw that this increased our students' ability to be able to utilize their skills around phonics. So, I'm going to play our video for you right now. I'm going to play our video for you. Hold on one second.
We are excited to bring U-Fly from the University of Florida Literacy Institute to our students and our district. U-Fly Foundation's program is an ongoing effort to improve literacy outcomes for children learning to read. We have seen students' confidence grow in their decoding and their fluency in understanding letters and their sounds and their relationships, and we've seen teachers grow in their confidence of how to teach those foundational skills. So, we are incredibly grateful to them, and we're taking what they've learned to be able to support our district-wide implementation. The work of U-Fly focuses on two main areas, teacher development and reader development. U-Fly Foundation is an explicit and systematic program that was developed for teaching foundational reading skills necessary for proficient reading.
As a former second-grade teacher, I learned just the importance of having systematic, explicit instruction. And that's what U-Fly is and even more. When you go into the classrooms, the kids are not just speaking and listening, but the program ties in the writing. So, there's the constant decoding, encoding that is essential for the foundation of phonics and the kids learning how to read and write.
The data speaks for itself. I have students who were performing below their grade-level peers, and they have progressed more in the last two months than I've seen all school year. I'm really excited to see what U-Fly brings for us when we start fresh in August.
U-Fly addresses the following areas. Phoneme blending and segmentation practice. Accuracy and automaticity of grapheme, phoneme correspondences. Decoding automaticity of words with previously learned concepts. Explicit introduction of new concepts. Decoding and encoding practice. Reading and spelling irregular words. Reading and connected text.
All of our students are gaining success, even ones that are consistently underperforming.
Students who had difficulty with letter sound and letter recognition.
Students who had difficulty with letter sound and letter recognition, within just a few months of U-Fly, were able to read.
The work of U-Fly is deeply rooted in the science of reading. The term "science of reading" refers to the research that reading experts have conducted on how we learn to read. It is both evidence and research-based.
Every week, we're able to see the progress of the program and really assess very quickly where students are in their mastery of the skills that have been taught. From there, we take that data and we input it into a spreadsheet that allows teachers to really, out of snap, make judgments about where their students are in the progression of those skills.
These cards are the implementation tool used to support the teachers while instructing during the U-Fly lessons. As the lessons have what they're teaching, these cards provide how they're teaching it. In the beginning of your teacher manual, it has all the guidelines and details for each step.
U-Fly calls for explicit, systematic instruction with many opportunities for students to respond and practice. It follows a carefully-developed scope and sequence designed to ensure that students systematically acquire each skill needed and learn to apply each skill with automaticity and competence.
The kids use the sound wall over there to find where the placement is of their tongue and the mouth, and then they just kind of go down the line to find the letter that can make those sounds.
They have truly grown as a home classroom, and I have noticed that their proficiency has gotten a lot better.
The confidence of my students have increased. The engagement is phenomenal.
The program is designed to be used for core instruction in the primary grades or for intervention with struggling students in any grade. The program features ample opportunities for students to practice along with built-in gradual release. It provides teachers with detailed lesson plans, a PowerPoint slide deck to accompany each lesson, and downloadable materials for homework or center activities.
Every single part of this is very engaging. It's very user-friendly. The PowerPoints are all prepared for us, a few clicks, and we're ready to go for the day. So I'm very, very happy with this, and my students are doing very well.
U-Fly is easy. It comes with PowerPoints. It comes with all the necessities and materials that you need to teach your phonics lesson.
We had the opportunity to coach and mentor teachers through the program through co-teaching, modeling, and above all, planning.
They've been excited to have us in their classrooms, that they can show us the really great things that are already happening, and to also continue on their path of continuous improvement to doing what's best for our students.
One of the many things that I love about this program is how user-friendly the website is. Everything is divided by grade, first of all, and then you go find the materials you need and then the activity you want, and then the activity is divided by lesson. So it's very user-friendly, very easy to access.
The U-Fly program is truly with teachers, for teachers, and by teachers, and we are thrilled to bring U-Fly to our teachers and students.
So that was a great overview of what the actual program looks like now at all of our elementaries and our K-8s. So this is how we implemented the program from the beginning of the summer. We provided a Canvas course for all of our teachers that really dug deep into that science of reading. It was very important for our teachers to have a real deep understanding of why this program will be so beneficial for our students, and that was in conjunction with the work from University of Florida, the Lassiter Center. So having that clear understanding that our students need those foundational skills, that really launched into our ongoing training. We also asked that our literacy coaches come in early so that they have a deep understanding on how to be able to support teachers through the implementation at the school sites. There's ongoing coach meetings where we again be able to further support our literacy coaches so that they can directly take that back to the school sites. Then we had pre-service week in August where all of our K-2 teachers received their materials. This does come with a lot of materials, and we did not want our teachers to have to do any extra work. So those word walls that you saw, those were all prepackaged, so all the teachers had to do was staple those up in their classrooms. All of the package of the scripts that teachers had to have, all of the materials, the metal boards, the magnetic letters, they were there so that teachers were able to practice in the training sessions to be able to take that back to their school sites. It was also really important that we addressed the need of our self-contained ESE students because we know that that's a skill deficit with a lot of our students, so they need that direct instruction in phonics, and so we were able to have sessions for our self-contained teachers. And again, further supporting our administrators. We had many administrators that came to those early sessions and also completed those Canvas courses in the summertime. We had separate sessions for our ESE support facilitators because those are the direct support in small groups for those students that need it the most at our school sites. And then we have ongoing support and training throughout the course of the school year. We have an upcoming Saturday training, and we already have over 70 teachers signed up to come to be able to learn more about how they can better implement the U-Fly opportunity. At our recent leadership meeting, principals' meeting, that was a two-hour session with our leaders to be able to talk about monitoring for implementation. How do we better support our students once we can see in whole group that maybe they didn't understand it? What are our next steps? So that goes into planning centered around those foundational skills, and that's truly part of their CLP, is being able to plan for these opportunities. This program is very quick, and it's got a very quick pace. It's not about the length of time, it's about that, you know, the science that we're doing with our students and that repeated practice, so it goes over that cycle. We needed to embed that into our literacy routine, which is a 90-minute opportunity for reading with our students, and then being able to ensure that we maintained that focused implementation. Giving teachers something and then saying, okay, you're good, is not certainly best practice, and we need to be able to onboard new teachers throughout the course of the year to have an understanding of the program and how it's used. And then we do have staff in the Office of Teaching and Learning that can directly go out, support teams and their planning, and support individual teachers as they implement the program. So this is what our K-2 literacy routine looks like. You'll see that there is chunks that are very defined for our teachers in the planning of that 90 minutes of uninterrupted literacy time. So the U-Fly component, and then we still are utilizing our core resource, which is Benchmark Advanced, for our Read Alouds and for our Small Group, and I'm going to dig more into Small Group in just a moment, because U-Fly is a whole group activity. And then what we do in Small Group is really centered into what students need to be able to further develop their skills to acquire those on-grade level standards. So then we go into the Shared Reading. So we also have the Writing component, which is also part of the benchmark there as well for our K-2. So this was a graphic that we created, and we have trained our teachers with. So this is a visual that represents that 90-minute uninterrupted reading block. So we start again with our grade level whole group experience when we start talking about grades three through five, utilizing this visual. The Small Group centered tasks. This is an area of emphasis, especially for our third grade. We're going to be doing ongoing training centered around ensuring that these small group tasks are aligned to standards in grades three, four, and five. But again, being able to ensure that our students, if they need additional support in that area of phonics, even in grades three, four, and five, that they receive that. So that may be with an interventionist, it may be during their MTSS time, so that we can be able to close that gap centered around phonics. And at the very end of that, in the last gold bubble there, you'll see CFU, which as we call it, Check for Understanding. It's really imperative in our literacy routine that we check for understanding at the end of every lesson, that we ensure that before we get to a unit assessment or before we get to that end of the state testing or even before we get to PM 2 or PM 3, that we have an understanding of what our students may still need more support with. And these are just an example of a few resources that we embed into our reading routine. So these were created, these Checks for Understanding, or we like to have a lot of acronyms in education, are CFUs. And so these are embedded from grades two all the way through our 10th grade, and we still have some for our 11th and 12th grade as well. So these are questions that are already designed, aligned to those standards, that our teachers can easily use at the end of those lessons to check for students' understanding. And they are in that FAST style questioning, so we're exposing students to the type of questions that they will be asked on that final PM 3. So I want to transition into another area. We've talked about phonics being a major component there, and then those Checks for Understanding, but another component that Mrs. Belitho really reviewed with us in that science of reading is that rope and that there's lots of components there, but vocabulary is an area where we can easily develop in our students. And it's the quote here, you know, vocabulary is among the strongest predictor of reading comprehension. And so there are many components to getting our kids to that reading comprehension. So we wanted to be able to dig into the data. We do receive this from the state of Florida, and these three top parts, the three chunks, the green, the gold, and the purple, are how the state, are the reporting categories. The next row across the columns along the top that say literacy elements, perspective, those are our actual standards. So with that, we are able to look, and we want to be able to isolate trends. So in this particular graphic, you'll see that these areas are context and connotation and morphology, and these are the two components of vocabulary. When we see that these are below standard, these are areas that can, with direct and implicit support, have a direct impact on those other two reporting categories, and those are related to understanding prose and poetry in informational text. So again, that connection between vocabulary and reading comprehension. So when we received this data and we saw this trend across the board, we noticed that these were below standard areas. We wanted to be able to develop specific supports for our schools centered around vocabulary. So what we have done already is we have highlighted various strategies that teachers can be able to easily put into their lessons to support instruction in vocabulary. So this was shared with our leaders, with our coaches, and with our teachers to be able to take back to their school sites, to implement into their daily lessons. And you'll notice that there's a lot of different strategies that have been provided, because one strategy most certainly doesn't fit all, and we want this to be an initiative and a focus in all of our content areas, because everyone teaches vocabulary, doesn't matter what subject or what grade. So we wanted to be able to really focus in on make and take activities for our leaders and coaches that they could directly take back to their school center. So in September, at our most recent principals' meeting and coaches' meeting, we provided them with the PowerPoint and all of the activities to go back to their school site that they'll be able to take these vocabulary charts. This one chart that says the term, the information, the picture, and then what is the morphology or the actual root suffix part of the word. We've seen this in our walks most recently at schools because it's easily implemented into a teacher's lesson design. So we have instructional rounds that are very important to the monitoring component with our leaders, and this is a great opportunity three times a year with our principals and assistant principals, and recently, we've added coaches' rounds as well. And so we're able to utilize the tools that we already have, our literacy walkthrough tool that is part of our reading plan that's been approved, that we can utilize these tools to monitor for implementation and monitor how our teachers are implementing the literacy routine and where there may be areas that we can better support teachers in their development of their lesson or in the delivery of those standards. And then lastly, we have created U-Fly implementation guides, and that's going to be a major focus of our next instructional rounds with our leaders as we walk schools in the elementary and K-8, to be able to really further support that implementation and talk about next steps. You know, how do we really embed that into quality centers, and then how do we support our students that need that ongoing support, maybe outside of the whole group part? So this is mission critical, that we build vocabulary for our students, and so all of our leaders and coaches did receive this book. And again, it's about being able to have ongoing strategies that engage our students in quality work, and building that background of vocabulary is essential for the acquisition of language. And Fisher and Frye are very well-known for this research, and so this was provided. This is just a few of the examples that we have recently seen in our visits to schools. So this is a great incentive for our teachers. The University of Florida Lassiter Center is offering literacy courses, and so it can be part of their reading endorsement, and there is a $2,000 stipend for the completion of these courses. And so again, that's another opportunity for our teachers to learn more about the science of reading and those supports that they can be able to provide our students to increase their reading comprehension, which will again support our students' proficiency when they see that PM 3 exam. So that concludes the end of our ELA section. Is there any questions that I might be able to field before we move into math?
I guess maybe, if you could explain.
Sure.
The vocabulary is, when you say below, it was below standard or average. Is that the reason why we're not reading on grade level, that they, not understanding the words? Or not having a fast vocabulary?
First of all, can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
Real quick, because I think it's a very powerful slide, Mrs. Richardson, and I want the board to have an understanding of how we process and what we look at with regards to plugging holes in our students' learning. Dr. Wild, do you want to take the question?
Yeah, I would say that we cannot say that that is the reason. The science of reading is so complex, and it's different for every single student. However, when we look at trends, you know, where is a point within our results that would give us high leverage and make improvements? So we can see that in all grade levels, these are, those were two areas where we need to tell our teachers that this is something that we can do more with, and we do expect to see improvements with that. And what the curriculum folks do at the district level is try to provide the resources to make that easier for the teachers. You know, they do have so much on their plate, so we find the trends for them, and then we say, here, we're going to give you new tools to address that. And this is a continuous process. When we talk about school improvement planning, we are constantly doing this. What are the results telling us? These are relatively new tests, so these are relatively new types of results and trends that we're able to lock in on. So it's one variable that we believe will increase reading proficiency. So it's, yes, it's part of it.
And to Dr. Wild's point, the science of reading is very complex. However, we kind of see this as... However, we, we kind of see this as a little bit of low-hanging fruit, because one, if we can address this, it will impact those other two areas in other ways. So the more vocabulary students are exposed to, and it's complex, but it will also assist us across the board with reading comprehension.
And it's also an area that parents can reinforce at home. So in our parent nights, both in English, Haitian Creole, and Spanish, this is also an area that we can teach parents to work with at home in their daily lives.
You know, I, just throwing it out there, but one of the ways I personally learned to read, and I hear the science, everything has just grown and just developed into whatever, is I used to read like Nancy Drew, or Harley Quinn romance, or whatever, you know, and that increased my vocabulary, you know? I like to read those things, or Archie comics, or whatever, you know? And that increased that, you know, if I, when I read one Nancy Drew, I wanted to read the whole set to see what happened, you know? Or whatever, Hardy Boys, or, you know, just reading, you know? And that increased.
And that's an area where Heather Belitho is very, very passionate. She does talk to the teachers all the time and the administrators about, we still need to focus on the love of reading and find what genre, what topic, what type of book works for every child. That is why we invested so much in our classroom libraries to make sure that everywhere they go, and you mentioned the libraries in your program, to make sure that everywhere they go, they have a lot of choice about the books that they can pick in their independent reading time, because that is also a strategy that we implement. So you're correct.
And, and Mrs. Richardson, to your point also, we spend a lot of time as well, and, and we kind of went through that very quickly, but working with our principals and our school administrators on what good reading instruction looks like. What are the look fours? What, when you go into that classroom, what exactly are you looking for that translates to student learning and also good teaching? So that's something that teaching and learning spends a lot of time on, is what are called instructional rounds, where we literally go out to the schools, and we walk classrooms, and then debrief, and talk about the strengths and weaknesses we saw, and what feedback could you give that teacher, both positive and constructively, to make it a stronger lesson and to reinforce some of the things that we saw in the classroom?
Well, I guess I was just a little surprised at vocabulary as opposed to comprehension. You know, that, you know, I, I was just surprised at that data.
Those two definitely go together. The more vocabulary that you have in the background knowledge, then that will yield in the understanding of the text that's presented to the students. So they certainly go hand in hand. And then we are doing targeted support to those other areas that fell below. And those are more support in the area of purpose and perspective and rhetoric. Those are very ELA, reading-specific lessons for those, those grade levels. Whereas to Dr. Prince's point, vocabulary is every classroom all day long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I say going back to vocabulary in the way of homework assignments, and, you know, we really going to focus on, you know, we work with children with their homework. So one thing they used to have, seems like they don't have that this year or the last couple of, is like a list of spelling words or words for every grade level. And we don't see that anymore coming home. So what's going on with that, where they don't have? And they, and they don't have vocabulary where they're, you know, they used to have to study vocabulary words. What's going on?
That's a great question. So I remember myself having those, you know, 10 lists of, of words, and then on Friday, you'd have your spelling test. And so the research has really exposed that learning words in isolation is a temporary measure. Your brain, you know, will remember those words for Friday, but then being able to utilize them in a larger context of understanding, sometimes that doesn't make a connection. So what we do is we teach vocabulary in context. So when students are given a passage, whether it's information or literary, that we work with those vocabulary words that they will be exposed to in those passages, or in science within that unit of study, or within that math unit. So you will see vocabulary embedded in those ongoing instructions throughout. So any work that we do send home with our students would be within the context of what they're actually learning, instead of in isolation like we had in the past. So that might be rereading a passage, and those vocabulary words that they've already been working on in class might be embedded in that type of work. And keeping in mind that a lot of our homework and opportunities is that repeated practice. So that's where it would look slightly different than what we were used to in that spelling test type of opportunity.
And I was just working with a young lady yesterday where it was passage, it was a passage, a story, with different words in it that, that was, you know, she had to understand that, that paragraph, and she had to understand those words in that paragraph.
And that would be a great support, to be able to isolate words that she may not be able to comprehend within that passage and explore that vocabulary deeper within that context. So that's perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez, you brought up some great points, particularly about how things have changed over the past. Obviously, we're quite older than, than our students are in third grade. And, and I think that's important for our community to hear, because when they see that kids can't read at 38% or 48%, whatever the number is, you know, it, it's hard for me to try to articulate it at an appropriate level for, for the non-educator to understand. Because I tell them, I say, if they can't read, then how in the world do they do 76% on a social studies test if they can't read?
Right.
Because it's not just reading, it's reading comprehension, it's contextualization, it's sequencing, it's cause and effect, it's thematic. So this is going to help morph the reading grades. But it's important as educators and board members to, to help stress that our children can read. It's just not the reading that we're used to, you know? It's the way that they're being tested and how to read. Because people see, oh, you're 48% of that, no, my kids can read, you know? And that's, and that's the issue that we need to also tell the community is like, you know, hey, it's, it's how they're tested in reading that we need to work on. Because fluency is hard when they're coming from a different culture at home. I mean, those kids can read. But when you start talking about different cultures, you're talking about, which you're talking about, Mrs. Richardson, is fluency and Hardy Boys and stuff that we grew up on, that these kids are like different, different type of books.
And, and those are definitely areas that we, again, reinforce within our lessons. And, and also sometimes our students are presented, you know, like Mrs. Belitho said before, with texts that might not be that engaging for them. So how do we teach them that grit to be able to get through a passage that may not be very motivating for you? And being able to apply all those reading skills to be able to best present their knowledge within that assessment.
I, I would say also, one of the hardest things that we have to combat is the electronics. I mean, our kids are reading passages that are two or three minutes, and they move on to the next one, as opposed to when we read, we read a whole book. So the, the fluency is what we're trying to battle against culture. And I think, you know, we're doing a great job and working, appreciate all your work.
Thank you. Okay, see, no more questions? I'm going to ask Dr. Pruitt to come to the podium to be able to further elaborate on our supports for mathematics. Thank you.
All right, good morning. So today, we're going to talk about a couple of things with regards to math instruction. So we're going to talk a little bit about how math and ELA are different in their testing expectations. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the quality math instruction that we're pushing for all of our teachers and our students within our curriculum department, as well as our leadership development and the additional math supports that we're providing for all. To start with, we're going to focus on our test design from the Florida Department of Education and the Assessment Department. We talked a little bit last time we met about how ELA was, English Language Arts is developed on their assessment, and math, science, and social studies do look different than ELA. In the fact that every question a student encounters is adaptive. So when we were talking about reading, we were talking about passage sets. And the fact that each passage set, all of the questions are considered, and then a student is given a next passage set. In mathematics, it works differently. It works on each individual question. So how a student performs on a question indicates what is their next question that they're going to be given. And then each student has their individual pathway based off of how they've performed in the past. So for example, if I'm taking PM one, and just now, I took PM one, the next question that I see on PM two, that first question, is dependent on how I ended PM one. So everything is adaptive based off of each individual student's responses. This helps support students being able to access where they're ready to start that learning, and really how they're looking at what they're able to do so that frustration isn't hit on every single question a student has. Each time a student sees an, an assessment, they're left off at that previous step. So then that way, every student's responses and blueprints are based off of student responses. So when we look at computer adaptive testing, we have a test blueprint from the state of Florida that provides us with what will be on the assessment. How many questions are in each of those different reporting categories? And then it looks at a bank of questions that pretty much has a level to each question. So an easy, is a question easy? Is it average, or is it challenging? And that's that bank of test questions that are provided. And then the algorithm works in the background to say, hey, if I got this question right, what would be my next question that I should be given? And so we kind of look at it in this example. And so this could be any student's example of the test questions that they see. And so a first question might start off as an easy question. And if a kid gets it right, they're given an average question, which is a little bit more difficult than what they started with. And then they'll get another question, and if they get it right, they get another more comparable of an average question. But then they'll give, be given a challenging question. And so that blueprint of what a student sees is different per student. So my blueprint of what I see is going to be different than Dr. Wild's blueprint of what she sees, because every student is adaptive based off of their performance levels. So everyone looks a little bit different, but the students are going to see questions that are all easy, average, and challenging, no matter what they're performing at, to help pinpoint where student performance is on each assessment that they're taking. So one of the things that we're able to do is see a little bit more about what this looks like for a teacher and a student, as well as a parent level, because the state of Florida has started to release assessments. And that releasement of, the release of assessments allows for us to see the type of content that is being shown to our students. It also allows us to see what does a student experience on that assessment? Are there specific types of questions that we want to be able to help support in our instruction to our students based off of that release? It also gives us an idea of how many questions a student is going to experience, as well as the different difficulty levels of each of those questions that a student might have on their assessment. So this past year, in June of 2024, we had a release of third-grade math and third-grade reading, sixth-grade math and sixth-grade reading, our eighth-grade science, our 10th-grade reading test, our Algebra One EOC, which is our end-of-course exam, and our civics end-of-course exam. Next June, we'll see additional assessments released, which include fifth, eighth, ninth-grade reading, geometry, and US history. And then in the future, we'll also see the rest of those assessments released so that we all have an experience of understanding of what our students are being asked on those end-of-year expectations to better prepare them for the assessments that students are seeing. So that leads us into professional development for teachers. A lot of what we are doing currently within our professional learning is providing teachers with those released tests to showcase what students are being asked to do in each of those subject areas. And then we're able to then discuss, what does this mean instructionally to help support your students in the classroom? So we work with teachers to talk about the types of questions students are experiencing, and then what is your next best move to help students who see these types of questions on their assessments? We move then into quality math instruction. And so when we look at quality math instruction, we're really looking at what we're doing in our schools. And so Dr. Sommer talked a lot about strategic scheduling with our teachers and with our, with our administrators. And that focus started this summer with Algebra One and geometry in high school, and making sure that we have students that are grouped together, and that the teachers and the students know the expectations of what they should be seeing in that classroom. We're also focusing on our middle school math acceleration pathway, and that is being able to use the seventh-grade accelerated math course as a precursor for Algebra One. And we really want our schools to be seeing that seventh-grade acceleration course as the ability to do well in Algebra One. So how many kids can we get into that seventh-grade accelerated course to help them better be prepared for Algebra One? And then also focusing on our accelerated math plan in elementary or AMP courses to really be able to strategically support all of our teachers and students in what does math look like from K through 12 as a progression of standards? But with that, we also want to focus on our foundational skills within mathematics. And when we talk about foundational skills, in ELA, we talk about those little tiny blocks of our reading, in the fact that we're using phonics and those types of things. Math looks a little bit different. When we talk about foundations in math, we talk about three pieces to the puzzle, in the fact that we want students to understand the math, do the math, and apply the math, or use that math. And so those three components come together to make our students problem solvers instead of answer-getters. So in, when I grew up, we were really big into what's the answer to the math question? The problem with that is then, if I don't ask it in the same exact way, then I may not have a strategy to help support that conversation, because I may not see it exactly the same way every single time. So we're building our students' foundational skills to be able to see every time that I ask a math question, how can you solve this? What strategy are you going to use? And those are the questions that we're helping our teachers ask, instead of just, what's the answer to this question? Because we really want students to be able to understand. Because we really want students to be able to understand what they're doing instead of just going after an answer, because an answer is only a one-time thing, versus a problem solver is a lifetime skill in order to help support students and really get them to be persevering in problem solving. So some of the ways that we have done this is really focusing on conceptual understanding, and it really leads to those critical skills. So we talk about how to be able to relate content that builds on each other and focus on that need for students to talk and think out loud in mathematics. Some of the ways that we have started to push this initiative in our schools is to provide students and teachers with materials that is hands-on learning. Within all of our K-8 classrooms, we have developed and purchased materials for small group kits that allow for manipulatives to be in those math classrooms. But it doesn't end in our K through eight. We've also done it in our algebra classrooms with our algebra tiles and our geometry classrooms with our Ang legs, which are little sticks and things that go together to create shapes, as well as our pegboards, which allows us to see our transformations and our coordinate geometry come to life and have kids understand it in a deeper sense than just rote memorization. What we have, what we know is from Joe Bowler, who is an educator out of Stanford. She says, "When teachers think differently about themselves as math learners, students benefit." So we're trying to do that same thought process with our professional learning. We focus on grades five, eight, algebra, and geometry, because those are the students that we see gaps in from last year into this year. And so we're really working with our teachers to identify those prerequisite skills that they may not have known in the past and help them remediate at the beginning in order to accelerate them into those grade levels. We're really hoping, or helping teachers identify ways to build student expectations in that grade level while filling the gaps throughout that entire year. And all of our teachers who teach fifth grade, eighth grade, Algebra One, and geometry are doing professional learning this year with our curriculum department. That professional learning is that quarterly planning for teachers that focuses on upcoming units' math concepts, student engagement activities, and how teachers can help monitor student understanding. Vocabulary isn't just in English Language Arts, it's also in mathematics. And so we want to make sure that we're making the connection between reading and math to be able to build that support in math classrooms on what the academic vocabulary that teachers and students should be using to help identify challenging words that we need to explicitly teach so that teachers and students are aware of those words. For example, expressions are something that students have to be able to use in math, but expression has many different meanings in our world. What does it mean when you get expression in a math classroom? What does that look like? And what activities, games, and ideas can we reinforce so students know the difference between an expression in math and an expression on a student's face? So being able to make those connections that words have different meanings and highlighting those morphology pieces when it's important. We're also working on leadership development with our school administrators. A lot of times, we say that not everybody is geared towards math, but everybody is a math person, because if you can do math, you're a math person. So really making sure that our administrators have the tools to help them as well become greater math people. And so with that, we have developed our look force for administrators that help them see what does the math mean? What are the key concepts and ideas that they're getting within each unit of study? What does the target and the talk and the task look like? To be able to then walk a classroom and provide strategic support for those teachers in order to help make them available to be able to provide the next best step in instruction. Within our administrator professional learning, we are focusing on reviewing classroom walkthroughs and really practicing using that walkthrough tool during our instructional rounds with administrators. We also make sure that we highlight the next best step for implementation of math instruction at a school level. We've also provided all of our administrators and coaches the Building Thinking Classrooms book to help support what does that look like in our math classrooms to get students to be thinking more and getting teachers to do less of that lift within a math classroom. We also are working with our coaches and our teacher leaders on tools for implementing math learning. That includes working with our coaches with the Everything You Need for Math Coaching book that we provided for all of our math coaches, as well as our instructional playbook, which was written by our coaches to help guide next best steps for instruction within those components. This week, we started our coaching rounds with all of our coaches at our schools to be able to say, hey, what would be the next best way to build capacity of our teachers based off of what we're seeing in our classrooms? We don't just have professional learning from the University of Florida for ELA. We also have it for math. And we have been able to offer professional learning for 60 teachers in grades five, eight, and Algebra One to begin with, which allows our teachers to have a little additional math background for high-impact approach to learning in our classrooms. And upon completion of all three of these courses, teachers are awarded $1,000. So we're able to provide additional math learning for those teachers who have students that are coming in a little bit lower than we wanted them to. Any questions about what's going on in the math world?
Madam Chair, I do have a question. What does math tutoring looks like on the school level? Example, I have an eighth grader who is struggling in Algebra One. And he is saying he is not getting tutorial tutoring help, extra time that he might need to learn to master the skills. What does that look like in the school level?
Sure, I'm going to let Dr. Wild answer that one. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. If you'd let us know what school, we can look very specifically for that particular child. But it could look like two different things. It could be embedded within the classroom time. So instead of outside of the time, they're put into small groups, and he's provided targeted support. Or, and it could even be and, he could be offered something after school. So to know that's the student, the school, we can look to see what they are particularly offering. They develop those at their own school site. So if it's a 21st century school, it looks different than a school that is not, for example. So we could dig into that deeper for that particular child. It varies.
He's attending Leakin Park, so it's already, you know. And then, so we'll get with you.
Okay, so I will look specifically to that school and provide you a description of what that looks like.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt.
I have a question. Do you want to go ahead? Thank you. So if I have a math question, are there more, and I'm sure there are more than one ways or strategies to get the answer?
Absolutely.
I have a choice.
Yes.
Can you tell me what that looks like?
Sure. So for example, multiplication. If I'm going to do a multiplication of like a three-digit by a two-digit number, my strategies might be different where I'm kind of what I'm comfortable with. Some of us are really comfortable with a traditional algorithm, where we have just multiply across and multiply each of those components, and we get that answer, and we're 99% accurate every time that we've done it, because we've had additional support and practice in that traditional algorithm. Some students don't like that approach. So they have done things like an area model, where they divide, where they take apart a number into its place value components, and they multiply it using a model where they can see all of the different components of the place value to be able to answer that same question. Some people don't like that model, and they don't want to draw the box and put it into each of those components. So they might instead do a partial product approach, where they multiply things by each place value and then add up those numbers within it. But all three are acceptable ways to approach that property or that problem of multiplying numbers. And it's really helping our students get comfortable with which way they're most accurate with in order to help support that movement. And we want our kids to be able to move from a more basic model to a more fluent and efficient model throughout their career as a math student so that we're not just doing repeated addition for multiplication of like 250 times 14. I don't want my kids to write 250, 14 times on their paper. So I want them to get into a more fluent piece or efficient model throughout their career. But I want kids to be able to pick which model best relates to them so that they can move forward in their understanding. Does that make sense?
It does. But I guess, are we teaching those critical thinking skills, math strategies, that they, or they come up with it themselves, or, you know, so therefore then when you're in the class, what is a teacher looking for? What is acceptable?
Yep. So we do both. So we do allow kids to explore their math thinking, but we also do create opportunities for teachers to explicitly teach different models. And then we ask students to choose which one works best for them.
I have a question.
Yep.
So you said the Florida release test.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, simplify that.
Sure. So it is just an example of a student's assessment. So they release an entire set of questions that one student in the state of Florida had experienced on a PM three.
In a previous year.
In a previous year.
Before this, we, you had no idea what the test looks like?
Tests are secure, so you're not supposed to look at them. Plus, well, they're on the computer now, so they're different for every child. So, no, the teachers are not supposed to be looking explicitly at the questions. And until the state releases them, we don't see the exact tests. We only see, we're given examples of the parameters of what could be tested. But the test itself, this is the first time they've released it in this new model of fast testing.
And so they're releasing them like a little bit at a...
Correct. Yes, exactly. They're phasing them in year after year. And they try to keep them secure. So once they do a release, they have to create new tests, which is why they don't do them all the time, all at once, to test security measure at the state level.
But if each test is different, why is it secure? Because I mean, each test is different.
The question, each test is different, meaning the set of questions that you get, but they do utilize same individual questions from year to year until they release them.
I see. Okay, thank you.
See any other questions?
Just wanted to make a couple of comments, and then we're going to wrap it up. First of all, you know, sometimes we have these meetings and, you know, I don't want to misconstrue with the board that I'm not here just to give, you know, highlights and great information, and we're doing fantastic and all this kind of stuff. Math has been a blind spot for us. We have, we have been an outlier, and an outlier in the wrong direction when it comes to math. And I, you know, I said to staff after my first year, if we keep doing the same thing, we're going to keep getting the same results. So we've got to look at all facets of what we do, from what's happening in the classroom, to the materials that we're using, to the support that we're providing, to the guidance that we're giving our principals. And what I, what I hope the board hears is our intentionality, because we've been very intentional with a couple of things that we've done with professional development. You know, a lot of our teachers, when you get into elementary school sometimes, you're not expecting to be a math teacher in elementary school. So we've had to improve our elementary teacher's content knowledge. You know, in the secondary, many of our principals don't necessarily feel confident going into a math classroom and asking the question, is this good instruction? So we're trying to spend a lot of time with our principals and assistant principals, what does good math instruction look like? And I know Dr. Pruitt and her team has done a great job of providing some professional development to our principals and actually going into classrooms with our principals to say, okay, this is the feedback I would give this teacher, or this is good instruction, or this is what the expectation is, this is what we want to see in our classrooms. So it's been very intentional. This year, we're spending a lot of time in our high school algebra and geometry classes, because when it comes to our results in the state, we're near the bottom. I mean, we have to get better. And I keep, you know, once again, you go back, if you keep doing the same thing, the same way, you're going to get the same results. So we, you know, we know where our blind spots are. We're thinking out of the box, and I do think that we've got a great team of people. Our principals have been very receptive to the professional development that we provided our teachers and also to them. And I think we're going to see some really positive gains this year. And we're already seeing some of that traction with our, with our unit assessment results. Ms. Hawley, that's all we have. We do have a very special event that we're going to be transitioning to upstairs on the third floor, but that's all we've got today.
Right. Well, it's one of those bittersweet moments for us. Celebrate Jack as we bid him off to the next chapter of his life. And we invite everyone to come up to the third floor. We'll have some refreshments and time to visit and honor our friend Jack. And at this point, we are, but reminders, we do have another meeting tonight, 5:00. It's a double, double whammy day for us. So we're, don't go to the reception and think we're done, because we do have a 5:00 meeting back here tonight. But thank you all, and we are adjourned.